Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, ununderground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We're going to call this meeting to order. We need approval of the agenda for today, August, or I'm so sorry, for today, September third.
If there's no additions, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the agenda.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need approval of August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the August twenty-six minutes.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First item on the agenda is secondary roads. Good morning, Zach. We have a utility permit. And then review, potentially approve a vehicle quote and a department update.
Thank you. Morning. Uh, one utility permit. This is, uh, for Western Iowa Power, uh, basically redoing a service. In, excuse me, Arcadia Township, section thirty-two, across Birch Avenue. Again, nothing, uh, out of the ordinary on what they're trying to do, basically just taking out the existing overhead and putting in, uh, new underground, this existing acreage. Any questions on that one?
I'll make a motion to approve the utility permit.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the list is reviewing and approving, uh, reviewing a vehicle quote. So, um, you remember a couple of months ago, we were approved the, uh, a quote for a service body for our service truck. So I've gotten some quotes for the chassis for that service truck now. One from, uh, Carl Auto Group and one from Motor Inn, um, for the exact same make, model, um. It does be a pickup box delete where we're getting basically just the chassis, put our body on. We're also looking to trade in a, uh, twenty eighteen, uh, Dodge pickup as well. So that's part of, that's part of this as well, is that trading in of that vehicle. So as you can see, what we've got for the, the numbers, um, Carl was under on the new price of the, of the new truck, but was lower on the trade value. Motor Inn was, uh, a little higher, or, or sorry, yeah, a little higher on the new price of the vehicle, but higher on their trade value. So when it all came down to it, it was about a four hundred dollar difference roughly, uh, between the two. Um, Carl Auto was about just, just under four hundred dollars cheaper. Um, their estimate for their delivery on the new, new vehicle was about roughly the same three to four month timeline, um, which that does fit in with what we're hoping for to when the service body will be done, so we can get that put together. Guess any questions on that so far on what I've talked about?
There's no difference between the two?
Nope, should be identical. Uh, use the same specs, um, the same detailed specs on both of them should be, uh, uh, one ton, heavy duty, uh, four wheel drive, uh, dual rear, dual rear wheel, the reg- regular cab is what we're looking for, so.
On Friday, you thought that the time to get it in is only a month apart.
That, that, that's what they're, they're telling me from an, they really don't know, but that's their, that's their best estimate, from what I understand. Uh, until they put in the order, they don't know for sure, and even then, they still don't hundred percent know. So, um, it's, it's their best guess, which I guess is better than, better than my guess, so.
Zach and I talked Friday, um, he thinks I've got proprietary knowledge on this stuff, which it's all changed. It's just significantly different than my antiquated days, but the first thing that I wanted, i- it's early enough in the model year that all hopes and belief would be that it would be produced in the model year, so we wouldn't get into one of these next model years and then face a price increase as a result of it, which in the old days, they used to price protect. Apparently these days, they don't. Um, but it's early enough, but I, I would want it understood and in writing that should that be the case, if it doesn't get produced, we're, we're, we're either going to get it price protected as a twenty-six model, or we rebid it. Because it happened with the city and the city paid the price difference, and I don't think that's appropriate. Um, I didn't get it, Zach and I talked, it was after five o'clock on a Friday holiday, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Tony. He was out of town anyways, but I caught him after mass this morning. It's why you go to mass, is you catch people. But it's the, I asked him, I couldn't understand the rationale of the price difference and why they didn't get the competitive equalization. And I didn't quite understand it. It was a back of church conversation, so it was three and a half minutes long, but apparently it, it, it just, he wasn't able to get the, the incentive due to a paperwork thing or a qualification. He goes, but he goes, but I'm confident in, I've made it up in the trade-in. So, you know, that, that's what he's hanging his hat on, and, you know, I've always believed in buying locally, you know, to the tune of thirty-four hundred dollars. I'm not a fan of that, but when it boils down to four hundred, then I think, you know, he'll pay that just in his first week of taxes, so.
That's what, it's three hundred ninety-eight dollars difference for staying local, and that's where I say we should go.
I, I, I'm, I'm in, in agreement with that. Um, I guess the biggest thing is, is I see is this is a, if that's a trend going forward, I mean, we don't trade vehicles in very often. We happen to be this time, but that's definitely something that I think we need to consider going forward. If we're not trading a vehicle in, and there's, you know, somewhat this significant of a difference in price, I, I, again, I'd like to stay local, but that's, that's a best taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, I would agree.
That we're looking at, so.
Yeah, still bid them out after that, you know?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to purchase the twenty twenty-five Chevy Silverado thirty-five hundred HD from Motor Inn Group of Carroll.
I'll second that.
Do you mi- do you mind adding to caveat that the price must be protected? Do you mind that? I, I would agree, price must be protected if it would turn into a twenty twenty-six model. You agree, Mike?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, a few items, a few items off for a department update. Um, first, talking about the intersection project down at the Ottoman County Line. Um, all the, uh, grading work is done. They did get the, the pavement ground where they needed to. Um, I think they're waiting now for sealing up the, the joints that they have left to do where they ground and then getting pavement markings, so depending when they can get those contractors in to do that work, hopefully sometime this week, they'll be able to have that intersection open now.
On the Ottoman County side.
On the Ottoman County side. Basically it'll allow traffic to get in from the south into Pucks is what it, what it boils down to, which is, is a big deal, but there won't be, still won't be any through traffic going north, obviously, with our project going on there, but um, so no, that, that project should be hopefully wrapping up here, so. Um, as far as our project, the M sixty-six shoulder project, um, going along well, had, did have a little bit of rain that slowed them down here and there a little bit, but, uh, they're pretty much done with the south mile. Um, we're moving into the second mile, um, making a lot of headway. Um, utilities have been in the way a little bit. We've had to work through getting, getting some things, uh, they, they knew where, the places where they knew they were going to be in the way, but just getting contractors there to be able to get stuff moved, so we're hopefully we'll be away from that a little bit more here in the second mile, um, and they'll be able to keep moving relatively fast, but, uh, uh, making good headway so far.
Still on target for October fifteenth?
I, I, at this, at this point, I would say before, hopefully, but I.
Yeah, I would, I would say from what I've seen, I drove down there Friday, and I mean, that south mile looked really good. Uh, I think that they'll probably move right along on it, if weather.
If weather, if weather, and there's no other, any other unforeseen conditions, I think, I think we'll be ahead of that. I mean, I've.
Still in September.
I think in September. That'd be my. Next thing on the list I got is, um, I know there's been discussion at the Carroll City Council meeting about, um, ordinance, chapter sixty-six amendment for truck traffic prohibited on certain streets. And there was some discussion from the mayor and at least they, at least one council member about, you know, the, the people and trucks equipment that used Pleasant Ridge Road. Um, I guess the secondary road department does use that road for multiple things. Um, so I have, uh, written a letter that, uh, kind of explained that and what we've, what we've done and plan on, uh, getting that to submitted to this, the mayor and, and, uh, council members.
That's what they asked for, the council. No action was taken, and they wanted to know from people who would be restricted using it. They wanted to hear from them, so thank you.
Correct, and that, and that's just it. I mean, it's a, it's definitely a, a path that we use to get out to the south and east part of town. Um, and, uh, I guess, uh, wanted to just make our comments known from, from, at least from our department on, on what we do and why we do what we do, so.
Well, and you and I talked Friday, and I think there's also that point that you look on certain maps that that proves to be the shortest distance from southwest part of county to Glidden, Iowa, is, is through that area. I mean, so it's not just local here, but it's being done by maps that are generated out there.
All right, more anything else, I guess I just wanted to have the discussion and, and let you know where I was sitting with that and that I was planning on submitting this letter and see if they had any comments, concerns, additions, deletions, what have you, so.
No, I read the letter and I think it's well-written.
If you're for or against it, it's a well, well-written letter, so.
Do you want to include just one line that you are supported by the board of supervisors?
I, I can't, I would love to if you, if you're, everyone's in agreement with that.
Yeah, I'm gonna read that.
I, I will definitely add that.
And I think it's good that the way yours is backing this up, that suited too, so.
Right, that's, that's the, that's the design, um, manual that, that almost every city in Iowa uses. I won't say everyone, there are some that have adopted their own, I believe, but for the most part, most use SUGIS as a, as their, as their backbone.
Well, and I think one other thing is that, uh, you know, this road is, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not su- sure on it, but I'm sure that a certain portion of this road has been paid for by the county taxpayers, not by the city before it was annexed. So, I mean, it was designed for through traffic.
I believe so, Gene. I mean, just the, the width and, and, and the thickness of the pavement, um, it, it's sure set up to be that way, it seems like, um, but, uh, I would agree.
And three houses on the, uh, south side of the road on the west end are still county. They're not an extended city. So those top three on top of the hill on the south side are county. I talked to Sarah Friday, and those three addresses have a city address. And so they're going to need to be. I pointed that out to her. There wasn't a blue nine-one-one. You were the one that caught that? Yeah, God bless you. Yeah, I knew they were out of county, but I never dawned on me that they had a city address on them, so. No, no blue nine-one-one sign in front of them. Right.
Uh, last thing on my list, just want to give an ice, an, uh, update on the seismic testing that's been going on. Uh, they're making good progress on that. Haven't had any issues that, uh, I've been aware of or seen with what they've been doing. Um, from what I understand, uh, by the middle to the end of this week, they should be done with the, the testing that they're were asked to do on, on the area, in the area that they were wanting to cover, so. Um, but, uh, hasn't been any issues that I'm aware of, um. Uh, they've had their, had traffic control, um, they've been getting off, not starting till till after sunrise and being off the road before sunset, like we've asked. Um, haven't seen any, any damage or any issues from that standpoint, but so just will kind of want to give an update on where things stood, so.
I received a, uh, complaint about it on Sunday of all days. Um, might be beneficial for the media to kind of hear this and maybe help spread the word, but uh, the complainant said, we didn't sign the letter and they put those probes in, in our property. And I said, can you describe where that is? And I come to find out it's in the right of way. And not, I said, that's not your property, it's the right of way, so I had to give them a brief explanation of that, but if they see them and they think that they're in their property, it's in the county right of way. And, uh, they just still weren't very happy about it, but I mean, I explained it and did the best I could, so is what it is.
Originally, I think they were going to put them close to the fence line on the right of way side of the fence. Um, as it turns out, they found the better place was basically on the shoulder of the road. They're staying off the edge of the road, but they're not even going out to the fence. They're staying right up next to the road or within a three or four feet of the road. Most, most times, there's been some cases where I think they've gone out a little further, but.
Yeah, but you gave them permission to use thirty-three feet either way from center line of the road, correct?
Um, we gave them permission to use the right of way, which the right of way does, some places it is thirty-three, there's other places that are a little wider than that, like on some of the paved roads that they're, they're traversing, so. But, but that was part of the permit that we will, we've allowed them to do, that it wasn't anything that was going to be, uh, harmful or destructive to any infrastructure in, in that right of way and allowed them to do their, do their testing and insert the nodes, as they call them.
And it's often misunderstood just because we know it, we think we own it, and that's just not the case, so.
That's all, that's all I have.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, Zach.
Thanks, Danny.
All right, next item on the agenda is acknowledged receipt of the fiscal year twenty-three county audit. I don't know if everybody had time to take a look through this seventy-one page document, but I did, and and all the financials and everything are, are wonderful, but I think we need to definitely turn to page sixty-six and take a look at the last roughly ten eight pages, and this would be the findings that this audit firm has found within the county that there are deficiencies and also ways we can um, fix any of the areas that we may have or that they may have found some concerns. After reading through these, quite a few of them I'm fine with, um, and please speak, speak up any board members if there's any of these that you feel we could do some different things. I would start on page sixty-six. The first one is twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one in reference to the ambulance department, and the response was the ambulance department will work with the county treasurer's office to meet and correct all recommendations to the best of their abilities. I didn't really see a huge issue with that. That was more or less just putting dollars into the right amount or into the right line items. Um, and I did meet with Courtney on Thursday, and we did go over some information too, and so I'm going to follow up with Jamie as far as some of the concerns that I had in reference to where they're putting some of that G E M T payment into a different line item, and I know you get, if you guys weren't involved in that conversation, it's just something I'm going to follow up with Jamie, that they're going to be putting the correct revenue into the correct line within their department. The money is in there, just we want it in a different line to show the exact revenue that we're receiving back from G E M T. Um, so I'll follow up with Jamie on that one. Uh, the county sheriff, does anybody want to make a comment to that? Again, that's a more of a reporting type issue.
That's, you're just number staff.
We're a small county.
Yeah, you're going to have a hard time. You can't afford to cover all these employment, just segregation duties. All you can do is I think make changes, try to spread that workload out or have different people stay, do, only do certain things. And that's all. Hit, they have to do, just make some sort of operational changes there to make it work.
Okay. As well as the next one for the county recorder, I noticed, um, they as well would like to possibly hire, but they also said they were going to segregate duties, which is good. So I feel that one is fine. Then we become to twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four approval payroll, which the county auditor currently does. Um, there is an issue there, and I know this has been brought up before um, about time clocks and actually going to a pay in the rears, not in pay in the head for our payroll. And I think after Courtney, did we decide, um, potentially after this election, this presidential election, we were going to look at a system that we could get into a payroll system? Cause it does state, I know we were um, potentially had some pushback from a certain department, but it says page sixty-nine, third paragraph in, this would help prevent and mitigate payroll errors, which I'm not saying there's any errors, but it would help would ensure the county auditor's office has sufficient support to comply with the Fair Labor Standards Act for county employees. I just noticed that in that, uh, paragraph, so we, I mean, we would be following the Fair Labor Standard Act.
And it also creates your way to track vacation and sick leave and all that. And, and I think that probably we as a board is, I know we tried to work with this, but we've got some pushback, but I think we need to move forward and get some sort of policy in place.
Well, and it says.
Be a union issue?
Not necessarily.
I just know this has showed up at every time we've had an audit, and, um, it says our response is the board will pass a policy.
Certain departments that have resisted that.
Okay.
Uh, so maybe that's, we can.
It says the response, I wish, I wish we had, um, live closeout meetings with the audit firm, because it says response, the board will pass a policy regarding submittal of time sheets. I don't remember anybody talking to me. We, we tried that, but but I mean, it says that was the response. So I think, uh, an in-person closeout should be part of the.
What, don't they?
They used to do that. The state did it for sure.
Did they meet with anybody? Do you know, Courtney?
Me.
Just you?
Yeah, they don't, you know, the state did an entrance and an exit with one of the supervisors, and they don't, this firm does not do that. And I'm sure they'd be willing to, we just have to ask.
Yeah.
So did you give them the impression that the board is going to work on this or tried to work on this?
We have been trying to work on it.
Okay, so that's probably why they put this in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure who put the word will.
That's what.
I, I'd like it to see, will consider, or something along those lines, but I think we're all in agreement that it needs to get changed somehow. Um, they did list the departments that don't turn in the time sheets. And, um, a couple of them are elected officials. Obviously, an elected official doesn't have to turn in a time sheet, but.
Yeah, we have the sheriff, the community center, which is what?
NOM Center.
I think the NOM Center, I think that's a.
Vet trans affair, home care aides, the county attorney, and departments do not submit time sheets.
What about home care aides?
Well, it's something that we need to work on.
Yeah.
And I, I think too, Courtney, I think next time this, if this audit firm, which we did hire.
We just renewed them, yeah.
We should request that they do a closeout with someone on the board here.
Yeah.
Why couldn't they do the closeout just in, in a public meeting?
They could do that too.
Yeah. They do with the city. Yeah, I was gonna say, that's the way.
I think Courtney was a hundred percent correct, though. It was, I mean, and we just have to ask, probably, I mean, they, I'm going to assume they'd be just fine with that.
Well, I know they do, but they come to new option.
Same group.
Um, those were, that was the one that really stood out to me. I don't know, does anybody have any other?
Already corrected, and Lisa, didn't we add another depository?
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that one's been corrected.
That, yeah.
Yeah, I think our biggest one was that time sheets.
Their answer to everything is add staff, add staff, add staff.
And that don't work.
That doesn't work.
I mean.
I mean, how do smaller counties do it than us? I mean, you can't have.
They get rolled up every year, same thing, same language, segregation duties. That is a safe out for auditors. Excuse my print, but yeah.
Well, if you look at the county reporter, it says all three individuals in the recorder's office collect cash, prepare the deposit, and prepare the monthly bank recounts. All three of them do it, so why is there? Everybody's doing it. It's not like one person's doing it.
Well, one person's supposed to do this. When they say segregation duties, one person does this, receives it, one person deposit, one records it. So they need to split that up between them three people. Not all do the same activities. That's what they're saying in segregation duty, because what you're doing is when you do that, you'll, you have an oversight of each one as you do another process. And, you know, in small, small organizations, that doesn't work.
So do we want to put a date on when we think we should, when the board will pass? And do we want to give ourselves the deadline on that one where it says?
Well, if you look at last year's audit, I bet it says the exact same thing.
That's what I mean.
They've been saying it for a while, but I think I, I would like to allow Courtney to get through the presidential election, because it does, it does require program changing within their computer system.
The thing is, for the public's knowledge, it isn't like the board of supervisors hasn't tried to do something like this.
Correct.
We've worked on it.
But to your point, I, I, rather than kick the can again to another year and have it say the same thing again.
No, we need to, we need to move on.
Yeah, and so.
Whether, whether we set a, whether we set a policy and somebody doesn't go along with it, then that's something that we'll have to correct at that time.
I mean, we need to keep it on the radar, otherwise it'll be twenty twenty-five, and we'll be reading the same thing, have the same issue.
I would say.
Ultimately, the supervisors are accountable for this ultimate thing, so.
Before the beginning of next fiscal year.
Yep. That's, that's end of June. That's good.
You okay with that, Courtney?
Courtney's like, uh, sure.
Yep.
Well, I think there were, you guys were working with Tyler, correct, in several?
We were, and the, the problem we have is the way we do payroll now, um, in order to, you know, pay off a time sheet, you're, we're going to have to change our pay periods.
Yeah.
Unless we keep it the way it is and just require everybody to turn in a time sheet. You know, there's a couple different.
Yeah, I thought we were going to do it in arrears and do it, move it to twenty-six pay periods.
We could, we could. But by doing that, it really changes things, like our whole payroll system in general, and then also we went.
I, I don't think that's a big issue as, as the fact of.
It is a huge issue. It's a huge issue with payroll. Well, yeah, yeah.
I think that, I mean, according to audit.
Sure.
That's more of the issue is the time sheets recording of the, of the time they work and their vacation and, and sick leave, and that's the big issue here. Whether we do it in arrears or.
Right. That's not what we're getting rolled up for. We're getting rolled up for just the time sheet.
That's what we need to get to work on.
Well, and I think we can dig into that too, because obviously we've got to look into a system that would work for the county. Obviously, every department's a little different. I know secondary roads does it differently, and Amy, I mean, she hands it into Courtney, so I think it's going to take a little time to figure out which would work best, but ultimately, I think we can make it happen, so. Any other questions on the fiscal year twenty-three county audit? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Yep.
Accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the audit.
I'll second.
Fiscally, you're twenty-three.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item, item number three, the HIPAA consultant discussion. I know Dalton, you're going to speak to this a little bit. We've all had a little bit of a discussion on who we currently use and who will we be using going forward.
Uh, it looks like this, this is on, cool. Um, so we, uh, you know, originally started out, uh, we were looking for a HIPAA group to, he doesn't HIPAA compliance. Um, originally, if you remember, we approved and hired Karash. Um, we spent about a year with them, um, ended up going to this other group, uh, that we are getting rid of now. If you remind me the name, it'll say on there.
Midwest Compliance.
Midwest Southeast. Thank you. Always remember the acronym. Um, so then we went to them, they kind of helped us get it in compliance. They're a little bit cheaper at the time. Uh, we spent the last couple of years with them, did some onsite trainings. Um, at the time. Um, at the time, ISAC did not offer anything that was uh as far as onsite or getting you compliance, they had some suggested vendors. Um, and these two vendors were the suggested vendors we went with to kind of get a store we need to be. Um, so we'd kind of just do yearly training now, uh, we check policy, um, make sure it's updated, things like that. But the ISAC new program now covers that, that's much more affordable. Um, since we did approve the the second group, uh, with the the board, we had to have the board also um dissolve the contract. So today what we're seeking is getting that HIPAA contract dissolved um with that second group.
Can you speak to real quick what the cost savings to the taxpayers would be? What is the savings by switching, just roughly?
So we're roughly paying uh twelve to fourteen hundred a month, I think, Courtney, you remind me of
Yeah, it's fifteen thousand a year.
Yeah, so about fifteen thousand a year. And I think uh the ISAC program was only like thirteen hundred for the first uh annual fee, and that's just a one-time annual fee. And then it's like twelve hundred a year after that, so really affordable, kind of has the the same services, so uh, yeah, very good savings.
Perfect.
And you said the this ISAC is just new, this program just started out?
Yeah, I think it was uh twenty, maybe twenty twenty-four, or I'm sorry, two rather.
Well, they they weren't available when we signed on.
No, when we first signed up, um, the, if you, if you look at the documentation, it says suggested vendors, but that was, that's what they had.
So they're asking for thirty day notice to terminate the contract, so that's what you're asking for today?
Yep. That's right.
There's not gonna be a penalty for that, is there?
Um, the the nomenclature is as long as we spent the first year with them, which we've um been with them a year. And there was no contract termination fee, so it was just a thirty day notice like we're doing now.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we terminate services. Have to be November first now to give a thirty day, do we pay him the first of the month, Courtney?
First bill day of the month.
Okay. Yeah, unless we can do it October first, but November first.
Okay.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Dalton.
Thank you.
Dalton, do you want me to do the letter? No, no, that's fine.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to review the Maple River watershed rate request from Steve Anderson. Uh, I think everybody had a moment to take a look at this letter that we have received. He's requesting that the billing um would go away, cause for the past six years, there has been no water or wastewater used as at this address. Additionally, the previous well water service to the property has been shut down. Um, he has derived no benefit from the wastewater system. And there are no current or future plans to place a housing structure on this property.
So basically, he's paying sewer on an em- or on a vacant lot.
And I think the reason this is done this way is when this loan was taken out, there were so many users, and that was what was the support payment of this project. And I think until this debt is paid, these need to still stay in place, cause we keep losing you, lose users fees. We're gonna be back in the same problem we were before. I mean, and there there's a hookup fee there and stuff that's there already, so if he would ever decide to build something on there, it's there. I at this point would say no, that we do not, we leave it intact, cause there's other ones that are paying fees. Am I right, Courtney? And uh if we lose those, we're gonna be in deeper, deeper trouble with that cash flow and that system.
So when's the loan complete on this, Courtney?
Thirty-nine, I think, remember right now.
Twenty thirty-nine?
I think it is. I think once this is, this, the loan is paid off, then I have no problem with it.
What does Steve pay annually?
I I don't. I don't know why we don't look at the word or the verbiage, but I don't see charging him full amount if he's not using it.
I mean, well, he isn't
Yeah, fifty-five is the full amount now, getting ready to go to seventy.
So he's only paying twenty dollars here. So I think that was based on the the, am I right, twenty?
Yeah, the board made a motion whenever, a couple of years ago, to lower that payment on that particular parcel to twenty. Because
I don't, I, they did it that time.
Okay.
I don't know if we should have did that then, but so
I I I like the idea that it has hookup for that, but yeah, I wouldn't expect him to pay the full seventy-five.
You would expect him to pay?
No.
No. But I mean, that, I think that was set up at that time with that loan. Those fees were there, so they keep that current revenue for the loan payment.
Paying the principal on the
They're not having no problem adjusting.
Yep.
Has he been paying it? He's just asking to no longer have to pay it.
And he, and he, he has sewer hookup on his property.
He has a hookup there.
Yeah, I think there was a trailer there when the system went in. If I remember right, there was something there, and then it was removed from the property, so now it's just a lot.
And then what you're saying is, is if you forego it for him, there's other properties that you would have to do the same thing.
Probably you're gonna get requests for them too.
How many others are you talking?
I don't know, probably several.
I would say a few.
And you know, and what says that uh someone has a fire and loses their house and they charge down, well then you're still got that property, you're right hook up. I mean, it it's based on a number of users that's paying that debt. We, if you get
But he's not a user.
He's not a user.
But if it, if you, if you don't have that user, then we're gonna have to jack up rates some more.
But the lines run to the property.
It was part of the original, how much was the original loan? How many hundred thousand, do you remember?
I don't know.
Oh, jeepers.
So this is still paying off the original, this is not paying for Jared Hayes, it's not paying for any of the testing. And and it might add, it might add value to the lot.
Honest, that that isn't probably enough even cover is part of the debt. That's my opinion.
What does the city do when there's a lot owned and there's services, utilities provided to that lot, but there is no structure, do they still have to pay?
Yeah, I think it varies on the cities, what they're
Does it?
I can't tell you, I really, I I don't know, once, once the service is is terminated, I don't know if there is a hookup, monthly hookup fee or not, I I can't tell you, I do not know.
Well, with electric, if there's no meter, there's no charge, so.
I think the problem is, is the users or landowners that had it ran to their property are still paying the county back for installing the system to begin with. It's not the monthly maintenance fee.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody's gotta pay back that.
Pay the loan back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And be different if we were square with
Right.
This original uh
That's the best point I've heard so far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And at some point, when the, that loan's paid for, and then you're just having your Jared Hayes and your filter cleanings and that, the pumping and
We could reevaluate.
So is there some barnacking math we can do to tell this gentleman that we can't cut it off now, but we can cut it off at a certain date when the loan is originally paid for? Is there some kind of rough math we could do and?
Well, yeah, we can look at the schedule.
I mean, we're talking two hundred and forty dollars a year on a three hundred thousand dollar loan.
The loan is eleven ninety-two a month of the, the rest of it was electric, D and R permit, foundation, uh, test shipping, filters, Jared Hayes, pumps, like repairs, and uh the pumping of the pit was fifty-three forty-eight of it. So eleven ninety-two a month is just the loan.
That was originally before we readjusted it.
No, that's, that's, oh yeah, that was, no, excuse me, that's, yep.
Before we readjusted it.
Are the other property owners getting the twenty dollar a month deal too?
They're actually some are paying more. So to go with a can of worms.
Courtney, do you know when it was reduced to twenty dollars a month, you know what year that was? Or how that number was originated?
I looked it up in the minutes, I don't remember what year it was, I want to say it was a couple of years ago at least, maybe where, if you weren't on the board, maybe three or four years ago.
That we did the reduced rate. I understand, and and I can see from your perspective, Mike, but I also can see from yours, I I'm in a stand with that they're still paying for their original hookup. And until that loan is paid off and we are caught up square, they need to pay just as much as everybody within reason, everybody else, until they can pay for the original service fee. Construction fee, if you want to call it that. And once that pay, and once that's paid for, maybe we need to reevaluate if you're an empty lot, no service, no nothing. And the infrastructure is paid for.
Yeah, I changed my mind just based on
Twenty, twenty thirty-nine would be when the original loan is paid off.
So in twenty thirty-nine, we can take a look at this again, but until then, until the actual infrastructure, in my opinion, is paid for, we can't take it off.
Would you like me to send him a letter stating that?
I think
Somebody want to reach out to him or?
The way you explained it would be ideal.
Yeah.
Once the original infrastructure is paid for, then we can look at is that a board consensus? Do we need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to also kind of keep him at his twenty bucks a month.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next item is manure management annual updates. We have one from D and H Pork, section twenty-three, Washington Township. Change crop rotation or optimum yield and used manure analysis and where to committee reports.
I'll go real quick, uh, cause it was just the Wednesday roundtable for me this week, and I don't think I've got I should have looked before I left the house this morning, but I I don't think I've got anything this week.
Uh, last week I had uh newspaper radio. Um, I also went to the Glidden Roundtable, County Roundtable, and uh um, also checked out the Fricky Wall, the Fricky Wall is um about complete, it's very close. And um we did get an email from Carroll City Manager, um regarding the two mile um, and his opinion of why they should keep it. Uh, Steph has reached back out to them and asked for a meeting again um within the next two weeks. And that's all I have. Hang on, next, last week, Monday, I did ask city manager for a list of reasons why the Carol wants to keep the twenty eighty. And I think we all received that on Thursday. Um, Wednesday, I did talk to the contractor at the Fricky Wall. Um, I also went to the city county roundtable in Glidden on Wednesday. Thursday, I did reach out to Renee and ask her if we need more clarification, or if there are any best practices for um expense reporting, um, and in the other counties that she's doing, and she's looking into that. Um, Friday, I talked to Zach about the letter on two hundred and tenth street. And um the district courtroom stub wall did get removed Friday, and the audio visuals, I believe, are all hooked up now. So there's TVs on the walls and speakers and all that fun stuff. Um, the county had to supply the pathways for that, and I, if I remember right, that was like twenty-seven thousand dollars for them to do it. Um, this week I have newspaper radio. Um, today, and today at noon, I have our final meeting for Access DC. Um, Thursday, secondary roads payables, Friday courthouse payables. Then on a final note, um sadness of the passing of longtime Glidden first responder Cindy Van Horn. She was dedicated to her role as the first responder and will be greatly missed by fellow EMS in Carroll County. That came from Jamie Webker.
Thank you, and yes, condolences to the family. She was a wonderful lady and definitely gave back and not only volunteering, but she was a wonderful family per- person as well. Uh, last week I had the Glidden Roundtable, and then I also had a follow-up emergency meeting with Wesco. Then I did reply to Aaron on the two mile Mr. Quaker with the city manager for the two mile discussion. And Thursday, I was up at the courthouse, obviously Friday, I was, I had a personal day. I did go take a look at the Fricky Wall, I do think there's gonna be some follow-up discussions and take a look at um the actual job description of what was to be performed and what wasn't going to be performed, and I think we're gonna kind of take a look at this, this next week. Um, and then this following week, I did receive a reply, I told Aaron I'd like to set up that two mile by September sixteenth. So he was going to talk to some council members, hopefully within the next two weeks, we can get together. And then I did do some follow-up with the audit, which Courtney answered all my questions, and I think besides payables, that is all I have this week.
Okay, I, uh, this week, uh, Thursday had a new opportunity, we had board ord- orientation, we had a couple of new board members join us. And uh, we had an orientation for them before, then after that, we had our board meeting. Uh, throughout that meeting, we went through all our financials and everything there, and uh through the head start, uh, stuff that was going on, or continuing and approve their continuation grant. Um, and uh, talked about a lot of different things. Um, also then, um, this last week I had conversations with uh Don Metzer, our direct director for uh Rowan Hills Mental Health Region. And two items, particularly was the new map that's come out. And uh, what's gonna happen there, and this conversation was also discussed at our board meeting, new opportunities. Uh, on the new RFPs that are be putting out for who's gonna be administrating those regions. And the other thing I talked to Don about is uh part of our twenty eighty agreement that we have, when we joined the region. Uh, there was doc, county dollars that went into purchasing some buildings. And uh, discussion was that those, and that part of that twenty eighty agreement is if there's, those buildings are sold, beans, a region is dissolving on the end of June of next year. Uh, we'll probably have to dispose of those buildings. And according to twenty eighty agreement, those dollars that are generated from those sales are supposed to go back to those original counties. So that is my intent that we're gonna argue for that. Uh, I have had some other conversations, some other supervisors that are not on that board, that are part of the twenty eighty agreement. And uh, I mean, there's, there was a movement by one thought that we should let these people that are using those buildings for services for mental health to kind of more or less donate it to them. And I'm not in favor of that, I think they need to pay some sort of price for those properties. It doesn't need necessarily be a full board, a full bore market price, but at least to be kind of a reasonable mark. So I'm gonna s- hold my ground on that, and I think we'll, we will get our way on that. I also did go to look at that road project down south in Manion and had conversations with Zach on a couple of things. And as far as this week, I think it's open season.
Do you have anything for next week? I think we have a presentation next week.
Yep.
So we build a, uh, we have Pauline Cunningham from New Opportunities.
It's, it's basically on, um well I'm losing my words here, prevention.
Okay.
And substance prevention, substance prevention and uh also um mentoring.
Any comments from those in attendance? Please state your name.
Uh, Dick Warrenmont, uh seventeen one forty-six Noble Avenue. Okay, and this is in the two mile radius. Um, I feel the two mile radius needs to leave. The people in two mile radius has lost, have lost all the respect for the city of Carroll. Um, it should be taken care of, just like Pleasant Ridge Road. They're trying to say where, where we can drive, what we can build, what we can park in our shed. And what we can have on our ground. It's not right, the public has spoke. We have three quarters of the people in the two mile radius that is upset with it. A quarter mile, I think, is enough buffer zone, I understand you have to have zoning, and I understand that very well. Um, a quarter mile, Carroll is not growing that fast. If they need ground, they can come out and ask for it. I feel if the two mile radius is not eliminated, it is do, it's gonna do nothing but hurt Carroll. You're gonna have another dead zone, a two mile radius. And me and Mark have talked about my thing, and I'm not gonna bring a whole bunch up. Halfway through my project, if I could have picked my building up, it would not be in Carroll County. Out of luck. I've lived here my whole entire life, and there's a lot of other people feel the same way I do. Carroll has a. Different rule on a different day for a different person with a different name, and it needs to be gone. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, any other comments?
Today officially marks my halfway point, so it's all downhill from here.
November eleventh, yeah, come sooner than.
Hey, no, it's, yeah.
For an order for a motion to adjourn? There's a motion and a second, any more discussion, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?